Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to your September Town Council Meeting. Good to see you all here this evening. Glad to see all of our staff and friends and visitors tonight. Those of you who are watching at home on Facebook or you're watching live on TV6, welcome to our meeting. We're always glad when you take time out of your day to be with us and learn more about your town government.
We'll start as we customarily do with our roll call of council members.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Ivan Huffman.
I'm Tom Lawson.
Happy Thursday. My name's Melissa Hunt.
I'm Mike Horn.
I am Ken Sadler.
Hello, I'm Jane Welch.
Good Thursday evening. I'm Monte Long.
If you'll join us, please, we're going to start our meeting with an invocation led by Councilmember Long, followed up by the Pledge of Allegiance.
Let us pray. Heavenly Father, we thank you for allowing us to gather here this evening. We pray for guidance for our town, help guide our residents and council members to do the right thing that glorifies your name. Lord, thank you for all your wonderful blessings in Jesus' name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everybody.
Today, we solemnly remember the events on this day 24 years ago. The images of planes crashing through the mirrored reflections of the World Trade Center's Twin Towers in New York, the rush to rescue by the New York Fire and Police Departments as concrete and glass fell from the sky, the smoldering remains of Flight 77 that crashed through the fortress walls of the Pentagon, the heroics of a brave, selfless group of passengers on United Flight 93, and the last words of one of them to her family. "I just wanted to say I love you, and I'm going to miss you. And please give my love to Mom and Dad. And mostly, I just love you, and I wanted to tell you that. I don't know if I'm going to get the chance to do it again or not." That was a day when the unimaginable happened, a day that changed our country and world forever, a day when honor, duty, and patriotism saw its most shining moment. On this day, September 11th, 2025, we humbly and with great respect offer these words. No day shall erase you from the memory of time we will never forget. Councilmembers, you have our agenda in front of you. Madam Clerk, did we have any changes?
No, sir, we have not.
Very good. Councilmembers, that's our agenda for this evening, and we have a motion to adopt.
Motion.
I think I heard Councilmember Long and seconded by Mayor Protem Hunt. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, that is unanimous. Madam Manager, the consent agenda.
Thank you, Mayor. On tonight's consent agenda is Resolution 2025-035, the financial statements for month ended July 31st of 2025, approval of draft agenda briefing minutes for August 7th, 2025, and lastly, approval of draft regular meeting minutes for August 14th of 2025.
Councilmembers, any questions for the manager? Tom will entertain a motion to adopt the consent agenda.
Move to approve. Second.
I believe that was Mr. Lawson. Nope, no. That was Ivan. Mr. Ivan makes the motion, Mr. Long makes the second. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, and I'm going to get my hearing aids adjusted after. Alrighty, we have a couple of introductions and presentations this evening. Stacy, I believe you have the first one.
Yes. Michelle, would you like to join us at the podium? I would like everyone to meet Michelle Bennett. She is the new Town Customer Service Representative and Events Coordinator. Michelle joins us with a background in education, hospitality, and customer service. She joined our team on August 25th and is already making a positive impact. Michelle is who you will hear when you call Town Hall, you will see at our events and our festivals around town. Be sure to say hi to her and give her a nice Louisville welcome.
Usually, when I speak in front of a crowd, I speak in Spanish because that's what I taught for 31 years. But I just want to say that I think I'm on number 112 of reasons that I love working for the town of Louisville, and I've only been here like 13 days. So this place is awesome, and I thank you all for making me feel so welcomed.
Welcome, Michelle. If you all haven't come into Town Hall recently, we all were used to Stacy Howard giving us a big greeting, and I got to tell you, that has not diminished with the addition of Michelle. So if you haven't stopped by to say hello and welcome, or I hope you will. Alrighty, this is, again, my favorite part of the meeting. Bessie, would you come up, please?
Oh, don't be shy.
I really don't know why I'm here.
Now, when you go into the, you go into Liberty Restaurant, all you see is this much of her. Because she's back in the kitchen cooking and doing all kinds of great things. But if you recall, about a little over a decade ago, we recognized the Liberty Restaurant as being one of the oldest continuously operating restaurants in Louisville. Well, behind every successful business, there's an individual. And through COVID, through lots of staff challenges, through just her personality and her will to survive, Liberty has existed. Bessie?
Yes.
I'm one of the reasons, or you're one of the reasons Louisville is a great place to live. Presented to Bessie Stoyas. Thank you. Did I say that right?
Yes, you did.
Okay, very good. I ignored the G and it came out fine. For outstanding contribution to the town of Louisville and residents, presented to the Louisville Town Council this day, September 11th, 2025.
I'm speaking to Chris.
I know what you want to say. You want to thank everybody.
I do. I do want to thank everybody, and there's so many, you know, first, how it started with my dad, how he passed it along to me, and Caroline's been there for 30 years, Percy's going on 18, you know. I mean, we're, you know, we've really tried to hold it together and, you know, make it work, and also want to thank my husband.
Your bodyguard.
Yet, we have not been able to get married yet. I've got to find some time to do that, but he's really supporting me through everything in the last several years, and definitely for all our family at Liberty, thank you.
Thank you, Bessie.
And thank you, Mike. Thank you.
That's always great fun. I remember my first meal at Liberty when I was first elected to the council. And I went and I sat down, and I ordered a course, and finished dinner, and I went to pay my bill, and Gus, Bessie's dad, came up and said, "There'll be no charge for you." And I said, "Gus, I've got to pay for it." He said, "No, no, 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 this is on me. For all of you do, this is on me." Did I do the accent pretty well? Okay. Good. And I left a huge tip, though, I think, to try to compensate for not paying for the meal, but thank you, Bessie. Alrighty, we do have a couple of proclamations tonight. The first one is the proclamation recognizing Constitution Week. I'll put on my glasses for this one. Whereas the Constitution of the United States of America embodies the principles of limited government and a republic dedicated to rule by law and not by individuals, and whereas September 17th, 2025 marks the 238th anniversary of the drafting of the Constitution of the United States of America by the Constitutional Convention of 1787, and whereas in celebrating the anniversary of this significant document, we honor and preserve the foundations of liberty and justice for every American citizen. Am I, is my microphone cutting out?
It's going in.
It's going in and out? Okay. Let me bring it around closer. I think Veronica's working on that now. Whereas in celebrating the anniversary of this significant document, we honor and preserve the foundations of liberty and justice for every American citizen, now therefore be it resolved that the mayor and the town of Louisville do hereby proclaim September 17 through 23rd, 2025, as Constitution Week. In Louisville, all citizens are urged to reaffirm their ideas established by the framers of the Constitution as we work with each other to preserve and protect the fundamental principles of our democracy and secure the blessings of liberty to ourselves and our posterity. Proclaim this day, September 11th, 2025, by the Louisville Town Council. If you recall, several weeks ago, we recognized the Louisville Civic Club and what, to me, was probably one of the highlights of being mayor and certainly being on the council. When all the past presidents came up, Ms. Walker helped us arrange it. It was quite an evening, and we presented them with "I'm one of the reasons that Louisville is a great place to live." Well, I understated it. So tonight, I'd like to further with the council's indulgence, recognize them in a little more appropriate way for all the things that they've done. This is proclamation 25, 225-03, proclaiming July 22nd as Louisville Civic Club Day. Whereas the Louisville Civic Club was established in 1945 and celebrated its 80th anniversary on July 22nd, 2025, whereas the Louisville Civic Club has been instrumental in transformational activities that contribute to the quality of life in Louisville, including charting of the first Boy Scout crew, improvements to Louisville School, now Louisville Elementary School, published the first Louisville citizen in 1948, formed the Louisville Fire Department, built the G. Galloway Reynolds Community Center, assisted in the incorporation of Louisville in 1991, initiated the Louisville Christmas Parade, sponsors of the annual scholarship for area high school seniors, contributed to the building of Schallford Square, provided books for the Louisville Branch Library, contributed to the restoration of the historic Nissen House, host of the charity golf tournament, and many other contributions too numerous to list. Whereas the Louisville Civic Club provides opportunities for residents to participate in community betterment projects, develop leadership skills, and form lifelong relationships, now therefore be it resolved the mayor and town council of the town of Louisville do proclaim July 22nd as Louisville Civic Club Day. In appreciation for their contributions the club has made and continues to make to improve the community for the benefits of all Louisville residents, presented this 11th day of September 2025. With no objection, council members, I'd like to present this to them at their next meeting. I see lots of head nodding, that's a good sign. Alrighty. PJ, you have the floor.
Good afternoon. Hope everybody's having a good week, one more day, and we can call it a Friday, so. The report for this month, August 761 compared to 698 this time last year, 389 of those security checks compared to 357, 23 traffic arrests and violations, 18 alarms, and still about a five-minute response time for our priority calls. Not a lot to report. Just wanted to make mention that we have a movie night coming up, so just make sure that we're using those crosswalks in front of Town Hall and in front of the annex, we'll have lights set up. We've seen an increased number of people cutting through to try to get to the old post office, trying to cut through there, so we're trying to utilize some lights. Parking's a little bit of a challenge with the construction going on, so just bear with us. We try to move that traffic away from pedestrian traffic the best that we can, so just encourage everybody to slow down as you're leaving any events, because we do have a lot of pedestrian traffic. Just take just a few extra minutes, we'll get you out of here as quick as we can.
Very good. Any questions for PJ? Alrighty.
Alright.
Thank you, Sergeant. Stay safe out there. Ladies and gentlemen, this is the first of two opportunities this evening for you to come forward and address the council on anything that you consider that's in your heart and in your mind that you'd like to share with us. We do have one person signed up already, Susan Frye. Please come up, state your name redundantly as I just did, and your address, please.
I bet you're surprised I actually signed up. I don't usually do that. Good evening. Susan Frye, Will Austin Court in Louisville. I want to begin by saying how grateful I am for the role our wonderful Mary Alice Warren Community Center plays in bringing people together. It's a space that reflects the spirit and needs of our town, a place for neighbors to connect, collaborate, and celebrate what makes our community special. But lately, I've felt a growing concern. I've seen a noticeable increase in nonprofit groups requesting free use of space. Many of them present themselves as contributors to our town, and while some certainly are, others seem to have only a loose connection to our community. It's wonderful that our center is seen as a desirable venue, but it's worth asking, are we reserving the space for those who truly invest in the life of our town? Now, I want to be clear, I am not against nonprofits. Many do incredible work. When I was chair of the Parks and Rec Board prior to the opening of the center, the board had numerous discussions on how to balance the use of the new community center. Louisville has many loyal local nonprofit organizations who, for years, were grateful to be able to use the Galloway Center, and we wanted to be sure that our loyal nonprofits were able to use the new center when it opened. But when groups that are not meaningfully connected to our town use the center for free without contributing back in a visible or impactful way, it concerns me. And this isn't about being stingy or exclusive, it's about stewardship, ensuring that our shared spaces serve the people who live here, and that the community is served by the organizations that are allowed to use the center. I know that you are working on fine tuning eligibility, but I also recognize that many of you on the town council, much to my chagrin, are not seeking reelection. Still, I chose to speak today because the decisions made about our community center will outlast any term in office. And my hope is that those who do serve you after you are, after you, are listening tonight and will carry forward not just the facts of this issue, but the values behind it, the fairness, transparency, and a genuine commitment to community. Thank you.
Thank you, Susan. As you know, we generally don't respond to comments, but I do want to tell you that the chairman of the Grants Committee, excuse me for a moment.
Pleasure.
It's allergy season, thank you. But the chairperson of the Grants Committee and the members of the Grants Committee have recognized the issue that you've just talked about, and I think we're going to spend a little time trying to take a look at that issue and maybe fine tune it a little more. Thank you. Suzanne Newsome. State your name again, please, and your address.
I am Suzanne Newsome, 1313 Allspice Court. A few weeks ago, I attended the State of the Town presentation, which was excellent, very helpful. I learned a lot. I learned a lot from the slides, and I learned a lot from the comments that followed the slides. Thank you, Ivan. In the meantime, I have met with the staff individually about several issues. I've asked a lot of questions, and they have been uniformly helpful and beneficial. Sergeant PJ is on my list next, to talk to him. I have just become aware of the time and effort that you council members put into this endeavor, and some of you are exiting stage left in the next few months, and on behalf of the citizens of Louisville, thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that wishes to speak? Okay, you're going to save your comments for the final curtain. Alrighty, Angie, you have some appointments for us.
Yes, Miss Mayor and Council. Before you, on the dais, you will find the three applications received for the two vacancies for ECSE. As reported last week, the town manager, Stacy Tolbert, and I interviewed the applicants and provided our recommendations, which are indicated on the voting balance before you. If you will take a moment and cast your votes, I will collect those and tally up as soon as possible.
Very good. We'll take just a second. And Angie, while you're tallying, let's go to the first item of new business. Stacy?
Tonight before you is Resolution 2025-032. We did receive bids back for the construction of the Lake Marblehead Dam repairs following an informal bid process that we went through. The chosen bid came in at $269,700. So before you, Resolution 2025-032, we ask for approval of the contract with Largent Land Management LLC to perform the repairs of the Lake Marblehead Dam. The contract amount, again, is $269,700, and I'll accept any questions that you may have.
Any questions?
I'll make a motion.
Second.
Are you, are you making a motion to, to?
Approve it.
To prove?
Resolution 2025-032.
You know, Tom, after 25 years involved doing this, this would be, this would be one of those moments where you froze. We have a motion by Mr. Lawson, I believe, a second by Mr., by Ms. Welch. Thank you very much. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Thank you, that is unanimous. We're still tallying, so Stacy, how about moving on to number two?
Okay. Together with the previous item, Resolution 2025-033 is before you for the approval of a contract with Grimes Engineering to perform construction, engineering, and inspection services for the construction of the Lake Marblehead Dam repairs. The contract amount is $94,500, and staff does recommend approval of this resolution. Again, 2025-033.
Any questions?
I'll try it again. I'll make, I'll make a motion that we approve Resolution 2025-033.
Man, you're a fast learner. We have a motion by Mr. Lawson, a second by Dr. Sadler. Just a quick context, did you do something, need something to say? You just kind of looked like you were going to say something. No. Real context on this, this is in the Runnymede, Willimere neighborhood, and years ago, we established something called a Municipal Service District. The repairs, specifically for repairs and maintenance of the dam. We've gone a number of years and haven't required any repairs, but all of a sudden, not all of a sudden, after years of just of the elements and all the things that occur to wear down the rocks and the embankments, we had to go through, go and do some repairs. Now, the good thing is, is that this is through the MSD, which is supported by a tax levy on the Willimere and Runnymede residents. So in this particular case, I think, Stacy, the bids came in below what we were anticipating?
Yes, sir. The bid for construction came in below the engineer's estimate.
That's great. Very good. Councilmembers, if there is no further discussion, I'll call the question.
We already made the motion.
We already made the motion, a second.
Aye.
All in favor?
All in favor. Call the question. All in favor, thank you.
Aye.
Aye. I'm not seeing a word.
Yeah, I know. I know you got a little horse to water, and making green, I know. I'm with you. Turnaround's fair play. Angie, you have the results.
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor. Based on the voting of council, Mr. Scott Harzog received a vote of four, and Dixie Lee Thompson received a vote of seven, Mr. McNamara received a vote of three. So I will contact Mr. Harzog and Ms. Thompson tomorrow to let them know that they have been appointed to ECSE and get them onboarded.
Very good. From the council, I'm sure I expressed the sentiment that we are very grateful for those who wish to take their time and serve on our boards and committees. Those of you who were not appointed this evening, I hope you'll stay involved. There are other opportunities that come up through the year. Stay connected and submit your application again to this committee as that you feel of your interest. Stacy?
Okay. Since the beginning of the 26, or, excuse me, 25-26 school year, with the help of our community policing deputies, we have enacted a pilot program, we're calling it a no-left turn off of Lucy Lane onto Schallford Road during school drop-off and pickup times at Louisville Elementary. This practice, we have noticed, has really helped alleviate a lot of the issues that we have had in years past of school traffic congestion, and also some other things that Louisville Elementary has been doing on site to try to help with the issue. Town staff, with the support of Louisville Elementary and our community policing, would like to require a no-left turn from Lucy Lane onto Schallford Road during school days only, from 7:15 a.m. until 8:00 a.m. for school drop-off, and then 2:15 until 3:00 p.m. for school pickup. The time restrictions would become effective once we have been able to do plenty of communication with the parents, with the school, and everything like that, and then we'd like to work with them in slowly transitioning them into this more permanent enforceable time restrictions on Lucy Lane. So tonight, we ask for approval of Resolution 2025-037, enacting time restrictions on Lucy Lane for no-left turns during those school days. Any questions?
Any questions? Yes, ma'am.
No, I'm good. I had a comment, no question.
I do have a question. Thank you, Stacy. So how will the signage look, and where will the signage be?
We are right now researching some signage. We have looked into some different things, but essentially, a lot of the ones you'll see, like in school zones, and they'll give you like a, kind of like a mile an hour, and then have the different times. It'll be something very similar to that, except it'll say no-left turn during school days, and then give those timeframes. And then we're looking at putting it in along the median, so in closest to that left-hand lane of Lucy Lane, so that people can see those, that signage. And we've looked into, also, there's options for, like, solar lighting for signs that would flash just during those times. So we're trying to research a lot of the different options in working with community policing to see what might work best at that location.
Thank you.
Ms. Welch?
I'd like to move for approval for Resolution 2025-037, no-left turn on Lucy Lane.
I'll second.
Ms. Welch makes the motion, Mr. Long makes the second. Any discussion?
Comment, please.
Yes, ma'am.
I did want to thank the staff and Sergeant Stringer and the school for this concerted effort of solving this problem, and it's already made a huge difference.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Thank you, that is unanimous. John, you have our next item.
You have one more?
You're right, we do. I just thought I'd see if you were awake over there. Angie, I'm sorry, you have our next item.
Yes, sir. Staff received a facility exemption request from the Winston-Salem Forsyth County School Board for usage of the Magnolia Room at Mary Alice Warren Community Center for October 21st, 2025, from 9:00 a.m. through 4:00 p.m. to hold a retreat. The Special Projects Review Committee did meet on September 4th to review the request. The committee unanimously recommended approval to the full council during the council briefing. So before you this evening, for consideration is Resolution 2025-038 to approve the facility use exemption request for Winston-Salem Forsyth County School Board.
Any questions for Angie?
Mayor?
Yes, sir.
My understanding was that this is a meeting that's open to the public, is that accurate?
Yes, sir.
That is correct. I believe they fall under the same statutes that we do. I would defer to our attorney for that to make sure, but I believe they fall under the same statutes we do for open meetings, law.
Certainly, school board meetings are open to the public. Thank you. Anyone else? Entertain a motion, please.
I'll make a motion. We approve Resolution 2025-038.
And second.
Motion made by Mr. Lawson, seconded by Ms. Welch. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? That's unanimous, thank you. Now, John.
Before you tonight is Resolution 2025-039. This represents what we hope is kind of a new beginning for our traffic mitigation efforts here in Louisville, and is actually the result of a lot of work we've done, a lot of hard work we've done recently in communication with the HOA Board in Oak Grove. This plan would put three sets of traffic cushions in the Oak Grove neighborhood, as well as putting a four-way stop at Riding Ridge and Fairhaven, where there's currently only a two-way stop. This is, as I said, the result of a long process that's very well-defined in our traffic mitigation policy, the last of which, at least on the part of the neighborhood, is their canvassing portion or the canvassing procedure. Just really quickly, it's up to them to get feedback from at least 70% of their neighborhood, and at least 65% of that feedback needs to be positive in favor of the, of the procedure or of the installation. They actually had 97% positive feedback on this, on this particular plan. So the HOA Board worked really hard, were really excited. This resolution would allow us to move forward with the installation of the speed cushions, this would be done in-house, as well as the four-way stop. And staff certainly recommends or appreciates your approving the resolution.
And these are the really cool cushions, because they have the brakes in them so that the fire trucks and emergency vehicles can go through without the bumps. that the fire trucks and emergency vehicles can go through without the bumps, but they're not, or they're spaced so the cars can't go through.
Correct, I see.
That's very cool. Mr. Franklin remembers a time when we didn't have that option. All right, any questions for John?
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
Hey, John, good evening. Thank you for all the work that you've done in working with the HOA on this request. So, last week, I think we talked a little bit about timeline. Can you give us, is there any changes in the timeline as far as when it will be installed?
No, not really. I don't think there's a very long lead time on this product. They're made up in upstate New York, and so I think as soon as, you know, as soon as first to next week, we can go ahead and order these. And I'd love to try to get them on the ground in October.
And this is a product that your staff, that you guys can install, is that correct?
It is, yes. This is something, as opposed to conventional speed humps that are actually built out of asphalt, significantly more expensive. We can, we can install these as a staff, and good thing is, as well, we can pull them up as if we, if we were to need to, for some reason.
Any other questions?
I've got one comment, no question, though. Thanks, John, for all your work on this, as Mayor Protim just mentioned. But you also described your selection process in arriving at the decision to pick this mitigation device. And just so folks in the community are aware, it wasn't something that you just came across and picked, it's something that you spent some time researching and then determined that this was a method that would be most appropriate. And it is one, as you just described, that can be removed by you without much difficulty, if need be. And you also described, we talked a little bit, and I think we got some additional information after the briefing about durability and so forth of these devices, and warranty and so forth. Just so that everybody is aware, not that anybody would have assumed otherwise, that there's a fairly rigorous process that's gone through when this sort of thing is done. So, thank you, and your folks for taking care of this.
Thank you. Anyone else? Yes, ma'am.
And I just want to piggyback on what Dr. Sadler said. In your presentation last week, you mentioned how we had budgeted X amount of dollars for this mitigation effort in this fiscal year, and this particular application came in under budget, is that what I understood?
Roughly, just, just kind of right at. We were hoping that, we budgeted $22,000 this year for knowing, hoping that we would get three of these projects to work on. We've got this one that's come to fruition, we've got a couple other that are in different stages, and so, so, yes, this complete turnkey installation with all our materials and everything is about $6,700 for this. That includes the speed cushion materials and all the installation hardware, as well as the signage for the four-way stop, paint for the stop bars, some temporary signage to let people know that this is a new thing, and all that in that $6,700. And I must say, thank you too, and I think all the residents that I've worked with have been ecstatic that this has been an option, and it's because that you guys, you know, that last year, we went through the policy that had stagnated for years, and we had a lot of, a lot of need, but not a lot of ability to do it, and a lot of it was just because we had a kind of a difficult calcified policy that you guys streamlined, worked through, took some of the big hurdles out of, and made it easier for people to do this. And so, this is really kind of showing the fruit of those efforts, and the people that we've worked with have been really, really proud to be able to do this, and they've been excited to get out there and do their canvassing, so, thank you.
Any other comments? Yes, sir. Okay, we have a motion, please.
Oh, sure. Motion, Resolution 2025-39 to approve.
Second.
Mr. Long makes the motion, Mr. Huppin makes the second. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That is unanimous, thank you.
Thank you.
Stacy, we're down to administrative reports.
Yes, so, a few things coming up in September and early October in the town. Tomorrow night, as mentioned earlier, is Friday, September 12th, we're going to have a Starlight movie night at Shallowford Square. Inside Out 2 is going to be playing, and concessions will be available, and then the movie will begin about dark. That, we're thinking that's going to be about 8:00 p.m., when dark happens, but also, the Girl Scouts will be hosting Bingo before the movie night, excuse me. The next CPR class at Mary Alice Warren Community Center will be held Saturday, September the 27th, from 8:00 a.m. until 12:00 p.m. Singers in the Round Showcase Concert at Shallowford Square will take place that same day, Saturday, September the 27th, from 7:00 until 9:00 p.m. And then on into October, None of the Above performs a rocking bluegrass concert at Shallowford Square on Saturday, October 4th, from 5:00 until 7:00. Just note that different time change from our normal concerts. Also, at this particular concert, Lewisville Community Assistant Program, or also known as LCAP, will host a food drive at this event. And then lastly, after that, the next blood drive at the Mary Alice Warren Community Center takes place Wednesday, October 8th, from 1:00 until 5:00. So, as always, more information about these events are, is on our website, lewisvillenc.net.
Thank you. Any questions for Stacy? Yes, ma'am.
Well, I love Inside Out. I love it, I love the second one, I think Anxiety is one of the things on there, so, but when is the, when will the Girl Scout, or when will the Scout group be out there?
I think they start at about 6:00 or 6:30, 6:30 generally, I think is what they, the information is on our website, but we can check to make sure, but I believe it's between 6:00 and 6:30 that they'll, they'll get started playing Bingo.
Okay. And residents can put their chairs out as early as 8:00 a.m. in the morning, is that correct?
On the day of an event, they can put their chairs out, yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you. Stacy, the CPR classes, are we still having those? Is there a limit of 25, and how many, please, are in this class?
We have that number. Angie, do you remember? Veronica has that number.
There's a massacre, and it's probably around like 19.
Right. Yeah, so, yeah, that CPR class on September the 27th, there's still time to, if anybody wants to register, they can email Veronica. She's going to be talking about that in our upcoming Monday video reel that she's been doing, but yeah, we have plenty of availability left for this one in particular.
Are you seeing a reduction of those, the numbers that change?
Not generally, I think kind of towards the last minute, we generally do have a boost in registrations, but, you know, when we finally send out that extra kind of week before, couple of days before notification about it on our social media, well, sometimes we'll see that final bump in registration.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Alrighty, Angie, with our clerk's report, please.
Yes, sir. I would like to make council aware that we are still advertising for applicants for LBC. There are two openings for that. We've received one application, so we still have that open to receive other applications. And then, also, we learned last week that one of the board members that served on the zoning board of adjustments and the MSD passed away, so we will be advertising those two openings for each of those, one opening for each of those boards as well.
The LBC, folks, is the Lewisville Beautification Committee. The MSD is what we spoke of earlier, you need to be a resident of Runnymede or Willimere, I believe, are they still doing districts?
Yes.
They're still doing districts, okay, so just double-check on that.
This is, this opening is for Area 2, and when the application is posted onto the website, there will be a map with that as well, so that, you know, people can see which area is indicated for the opening.
Very good. Certainly, our condolences go out to Kirk's family. Kirk has been active in the MSD easily for 25 years, maybe longer than that. So, you folks are in our thoughts, and Kirk certainly made his contribution to Lewisville, and we're very thankful for him. John, you're up again.
Sir, you, you as council are aware that we have budgeted for and we're working toward a new pavement condition study for this year. We have entered into a contract with Summit Engineering to begin that process. First and foremost, we came in on budget, which was exciting, of course, for all of us. We had a couple different proposals, and one, one was even twice as much as our budget. So, being able to engage a really well-respected group like Summit to do this with us is, is exciting. But this is as much a PSA as anything. You'll see the first process, or the first part of this process is mapping, so Summit are out, are going to actually be out on our streets, doing a lot of GIS work and a lot of initial mapping. They'll go back after all the maps are created, and will begin the actual assessment work, which means they'll look at just about every square foot of asphalt that we have town-owned here in Lewisville, and then they'll be rating that for condition, bundling all that up into a study that will, of course, inform our maintenance and resurfacing for the next three to five years. The main thing that we wanted to do tonight is just let everybody know that that is about to start happening, so we're going to see people out in the neighborhoods, there are going to be some, they should all be marked vehicles, but there will be some, some mysterious vehicles out there with implements in their hand, doing their mapping, doing a lot of their location, and then doing their assessments and everything. So, should be about the next month, month and a half, something like that, but this is, we're excited to get a new study. We haven't done one since 2020, I think, so we're just a little bit behind, and like I said, this helps us sort of set our goals and set our budgets, budgets especially, for the next three to five years.
Any questions for John? Very good. And what, John, I think, John, if I'm correct, that we use this study to prioritize the roads that we need to be working on first, because they're in the worst shape, and then we work down the list, and not everybody will get through this first year, but we're going to address the worst roads first.
Correct. Everything gets numbered, ranked, from 1 to 100, or 100 being the best, and of course, we don't have any zeros, but as you get down in 60s and 50s, the streets that really do worse, but this helps us with a third-party engineering route, ranks our streets, prioritizes our streets for us, so that it's not up to us to figure out which streets get it. We've got documentation that says, that, and it kind of helps us be unbiased when it comes to treating roads and, and around town, and make sure we get to what needs it better to shessle.
John, I'm sure the folks who watched your presentation tonight, and those of us who are at Town Hall and see you every day, have really aware of how you've stepped up our Public Works program. You're doing a fabulous job out there. You're always out, you're always doing something. Your background as an arborist at Mary Alice Warren has really helped, but you're doing a terrific job for our residents, thank you. Ms. Welch?
May I, yes. John, thank you for excellent job, and because the public's always interested, when are they getting to my street? Will you be publicizing on the website the order of streets that will be prioritized?
We won't publish the entire study. The entire study will be available to anybody that would want to come see it, but as we start to set those, say, those groups of streets that we'll get, you know, like what we've tried to start doing lately, is a big round of preventive maintenance, which is mostly crack sealing, doing that in the fall, and then doing our big paving resurfacing project in the spring or early summer. So, and then what we do is, once we know what that package of streets looks like, what those neighborhoods are, then we do try to get that, especially out to those streets and neighborhoods. We go as far as doing door hangers, we do as much as we can, but, so, we definitely get that information out there, but it's kind of targeted as we, as we decide on those, on those individual places and packages.
But for clarity, will that list be available, you know, on our website? Because people could still say, "I didn't get a hanger on my door," when is it going to be that kind of?
I think the list is voluminous. I mean, it's a, it's a lot, the study itself is a lot of data and a lot of information, but we do get, you know, one of the things that they're helping us do this time is actually create a GIS mapping layer that is kind of an overlay with the rest of our town maps. So, I think we very well can get that out there, so that people can see that, just like you can look up our Powell Bill map. I assume that it, that we could, we could have our pavement condition map as well. So, everything's color-coded, everything, you know, that it gives you a very distinct picture of kind of what condition everything is in, and it does give us the credibility that we need, I guess, or the backing that we need to, when we get around to each of these streets and everything. But we can certainly get, especially that map on the website.
That'd be great, thank you very much.
Okay, John, you were talking about doing crack sealing and that kind of thing?
Yes.
Do you, is that still, what you're talking about is like, we used to call a blended approach? And at one time, the way we used to do streets was, we'd have a survey, like you're talking about, and then we'd take the worst ones and resurface them, and then there was an effort to try to catch some streets before they got that bad.
Yes.
So, some of the money was spent on trying to take streets that weren't really too bad yet, and try to salvage with some more minor repairs, and then take the very worst. Is that still sort of the track we're on?
That's what we're, that's what, that's sort of something that we're trying to kind of really build into a lasting system now, and a routine that we're doing. It's, it's a lot of people consider it a pavement preservation program, so you're definitely resurfacing those that need it and that are too far gone, but you spend a designated portion of the, of the budget as well on the ones that just need to be maintained to last longer. So, yeah, so, so we're spending, you know, 20 or 30% of our, of our overall budget kind of on those, on those streets that are five years, 10 years old, and then the, you know, the bigger chunk of the budget on that resurfacing, on that milling and filling and that kind of thing, on the things that are, that are too far gone for preventive maintenance. So, we're def, and there are a lot of new opportunities out there for techniques on the preventive maintenance and the things that we are looking into, and I hope that we'll be able to build a little bit more budgeting into as well, and we're hitting more streets every year, we're just hitting them at different stages of their life cycle, and trying to kind of extend that, that curve a little bit, that depreciation or deterioration curve.
Okay. All right, thank you. Any other questions? Thank you, John. Ladies and gentlemen, as you know, we have a briefing, the first Thursday of every month. We're not stepping up here cold on, on meeting night and hearing these issues for the first time. We spend a great deal of time in our briefing to ask questions and understand the issues that are going to come before us. So, at that briefing, at this particular point, we did take an action, we like to report those out at this time. Stacy?
Resolution 2025-036 was approved, appointing Row Law Firm as the new legal representation for the town effective October 1st of 2025.
Very good. And Elliot, thanks so much to you and your firm, Blanco Tackeyberry, for your service on all these years, we appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Alrighty, ladies and gentlemen, we have come to the second opportunity, should you wish to address the council. Anybody? I hear chirping. Nothing? Alrighty, thank you very much. You can also submit comments on our website, email them to townclerk@lewesvillenc.net, and we'll make them part of the record this evening. Council members, any final thoughts before we adjourn?
I'm sorry, I had a question that got by me for the manager on our EV charging, is that still getting utilized?
It is, it is. We have seen, or are going to see, a little bit of disruption. There is a meter box out there that serves that, is in the path of construction for the Great Wagon Road, and so we are working with NC DOT and the contractor, as well as town staff and a third-party electrician to try to get that moved. So, there will be a small window, we hope, just a small window where they might be down, but we are still seeing some utilization on that.
And on the solar panels over here at Mary Alice Warren, are we still seeing a beneficial return on that?
Yes, sir, we do. Pam can probably speak to that, and the return that we're seeing in our utility bills.
Okay, thanks. One, one, oh, you're going to say something?
Go ahead.
I'm sorry, no, it's not, I'm jumping to another issue, so if you wanted to...
I was just going to say that, yeah, our, our utility bills are considerably lower than they were before installation, so we're continuing to see that benefit.
Great. The last thing I want to say is, Doc Newsom mentioned that she was at State of the Town, there were a number of prospective candidates who were there, and Ivan and Mayor Protim and I were there. We extended, at that time, to anyone who was interested, the ability to reach out to the three of us, because we were there, I suspect that anybody else on the council would also be open to it as well, an opportunity to talk to us about our experiences on, on council and what it led us to, to service. So, if you're interested, and you're out there, and I haven't spoken to you yet, and you're interested in speaking to me, I'm happy to tell you whatever I can tell you about my time on council.
Absolutely.
I'm sure all the council members share that sentiment, so if you have questions and want to spend a little time, please give us a call, we certainly know this is an important issue. Any other comments, council members? Staff, anything else for us? Alrighty, with that, we'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion.
Second.
Mr. Long makes the motion, Dr. Sadler... Mr. Long makes the motion, Dr. Sadler makes the second. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye. That's unanimous. Ladies and gentlemen, thank you for being here with us tonight in the chamber. It's always good to see faces. Those of you watching at home, thank you so much to take time out of your day, particularly in the dinner hour, to be with us. With that, we adjourn.